Hey, train somebody.
Good evening and welcome to the Common Council meeting of May thirteenth. It is seven thirty. Please rise aboard the national anthem.
We'll be taking the national anthem.
The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Please call the roll. Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Miss, Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Najoski Eichner. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
And then.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Winterstrand.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frere.
Here.
Ms. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Jelski Eichner. Fourteen we have more. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion? Ms. Ayers, are there any changes, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed. Abstentions. That carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is public participation. Do we have anyone who is signed up here or online to speak? We do not have anyone present, but online, James.
Diane Lorcello.
Ms. Lorcello. Ms. Lorcello, you have the floor. You have three minutes.
Thank, thank you, President Smith. Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. My name is Diane Lorcello, twenty-one Little Fox Lane. Tonight, I wanted just to speak to two, two items on your agenda. They may already be on consent calendar, but I still wanted you to give, give them some thought. The first is, I think, under land use and building management, the, wherever the ninety-eight South Main Street project. I have read with some concern that there was a discovery of water damage on some of the walls, outer wall structure. The thing is, we've been on, that building has been under our control in building management for decades. And a half million dollar plus project to add to that community center. I would like to know if there will be accountability, or if anyone will be taken, including a consultant, to be taken to task for letting this kind of water damage go without proper stoppage and construction and accountability for that. The second thing is number six under DPW, the Eighth Amendment for Woodard and Curran for downstream drainage design from the Broad River Complex. I just wanted to mention that many of us feel the problems at Broad River Complex were due to the fact that it's an older field and the drainage system on the field and upstream from the field are also in need of being totally overhauled, which I believe would be part of that design. So I was kind of curious that the downstream drainage would be, I think, not quite a half a million dollars, but quite a bit of money. And I was wondering why we can't just fit the downstream drainage design in with the already well-funded Broad River Complex engineering and design. And that is, of course, after we discuss what kind of infield will be installed. So I thank you for listening. I hope you have a good evening and stay dry.
Thank you, Ms. Lorcello. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I don't believe so. Okay, seeing none, I will close public participation and move on to mayor resignations and appointments and just take a note that Mayor Relling is feeling under the weather tonight, and so we wish him to feel better. The first appointment is out of Jacqueline Arias, Board of Assessment and Appeals. Do we have a motion? Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, President. I'd like to lift the name Jacqueline Arias, who is a licensed real estate salesperson in Lower Fairfield County and has worked in the county for several years and is dedicated in that industry. We are always looking for dedicated and different backgrounds of people to sit on our boards in commission, and she seems to fit that perfectly. She has given herself to service to the city on different projects and things, so I would list the name of Jacqueline Arias to the Board of Assessment Appeals and as the alternate.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed. Abstentions. And that appointment carries unanimously. Moving on to the appointment of Jessica Larsch, Parking Authority. I would like to move the appointment of Jessica Larsch. I have known Jessica for about ten, twelve years or so. She has experienced as a project manager with Deutsch Family Wine and Spirits, with the Mars Agency, with Inconnected Marketing, and with Colangelo Synergy Marketing, which is when I first got to know her, when she was working with my husband. And he found her to be a young woman of attention to great detail, highly organized, a strategic thinker and very easy to work with. I also got to know her because back then in her youth, she was, she often would house sit for us and take care of our dogs while we were away. She has since married, has had a couple of children. They are now in school. And now she's able to use her, her political science background. She has a degree in political science. She has done grassroots campaigns and has found that this is the time in her life where she's able to step up and help out in her community, and so I highly recommend her appointment and thank her for her willingness to serve. Any comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed. Abstentions. Okay, that appointment carries. Moving on to the reappointments of John Ignary and Darren Ostafin to the Water Pollution Control Authority. I will go ahead and move both of those appointments. John Ignary, as we know, has served on the Common Council. It's been quite some time, but he served as council president, as majority leader. He chaired the DPW committee, also has been on the planning and finance committees. He's been on the Water Pollution Control Authority since two thousand eleven. Also a sixth taxing district commissioner and is retired from, as president of Dreyfus Investment Advisors. He's a great public servant and he's very valuable on the WPCA. Darren Ostafin, who is the chair of the WPCA, is, is very experienced with the Town of Darien Department of Public Works, and he's been serving as, on the WPCA for quite some time. I know Darren personally. I think we've talked about this before. He is my neighbor. I've known his young girls since they were babies and, and his lovely wife. So I highly recommend his appoint, reappointment as, as well. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor. Abstent, I'm sorry, opposed. Abstentions. Okay, those appoint, reappointments carry. Moving on to the mayor's remarks. Yesterday, the mayor and several council members, myself, Ms. Young, Ms. Najoski Eichner, and Ms. Winterstrand were, were present, as well as other state and local leaders, including Governor Ned Lamont, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, to announce a one point five million dollar grant for the Norwalk River Valley Trail. This grant was awarded to us through community investment funds and will be used to complete the north, northernmost section of the Norwalk River Valley Trail within the city of Norwalk. A big thanks to Governor Lamont and Senator Doug for their support of this funding. Once completed, this thirty mile trail will become the longest recreational trail in Fairfield County, enhancing quality of life for our community. This year's Memorial Day Parade will be held on May twenty-sixth, beginning at ten AM at Veterans Memorial Park. We're excited to share that this year's parade grand marshal will be Lieutenant Colonel Howard Dixon. Thank you, Ms. Dixon, for bearing that. Lieutenant Colonel Dixon is a retired US Air Force pilot who flew worldwide missions for twenty-three years. He is also the founder of the Advanced Airlift Tactics Technical Center located in Missouri, and we do hope to see you there. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. As many of you are aware, May is Mental Health Awareness. Just said that. The mayor would like to thank the Norwalk Partnership for organizing Norwalk's fourth annual Norwalk for Mental Health Walk and Wellness Fair two weeks ago. The event had a great turnout with over sixty local organizations table, tabling and offering free wellness services. Mental Health Awareness Month is a reminder that we must do everything we can to support loved ones and everyone in our community who may be struggling with mental health challenges, especially our youth. Beach parking pass, a reminder to residents to make sure their vehicle is registered in our system ahead of beach season as we will begin enforcing parking on May fifteenth, that's just two days away, through October fifteenth at several parks, including Cat Pasture Beach and Shady Beach, Veterans Park, Cranberry Park, Taylor Farm Dog Park, and Marvin Elementary School. You can verify that your license plate is in our system online by visiting our website or coming to City Hall and getting help from our customer service team. The North Police Department's efforts in April for National Distracted Driving Awareness Month, and we thank the police department for their recent distracted driving and moving violations enforcement efforts throughout the month of April, which was National Distracted Driving Awareness Month. Our police department conducted a total of one thousand eight hundred eighty-four traffic stops, and four hundred seventy-six of those were traffic stops for distracted driving. To maintain safety for all modes of transportation, including pedestrians and cyclists, the mayor wants to remind everyone to put down their phone while driving and to focus on the road. And finally, the mayor is pleased to share that we are launching a City of Norwalk newsletter. You can subscribe by visiting our website or social media. The first newsletter will go out in June and will include what's new in Norwalk, including an update on new businesses, a message from the mayor, how to become more civically engaged, and resources for residents and. And that is the mayor's remarks. Now moving on to county president. And so that's me, and so I will turn it over to council member Jaylen Seed for tonight's consent calendar.
Consent calendar is as follows. Item seven, A. One, Claims Committee Report dated May twenty twenty-five. Two, Monthly Task Collective Report dated April twenty twenty-five. Three, Narrative on Task Collections dated May twenty twenty-five. And four, Action requested. A, Recommended Allocation of Five Hundred Eighty-three Thousand Six Hundred and Sixty-eight Dollars and Special Capital Appropriations Funds to the Recreation and Parks Department for the development and construction of the Knoll Community Recreation Center at ninety-eight South Main Street as identified here in this memo and attached documentation, current account number noted. B, Recommend the Reduction in the Amount of Five Hundred Eighty-three Thousand Six Hundred and Sixty-eight Dollars from the Balance and the Middle Schools Bathroom Improvement Capital Budget Account Number Noted. Five, Resolution. Making the appropriation for various public improvements, aggregating seventy-four million five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six capital budget and authorizing the issuance of seventy-four million five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars general obligation bonds of the city to meet certain appropriations in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six capital budget. Item six, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an electronic voting equipment lease agreement with the State of Connecticut for a lease term of approximately ten years and a total lease cost of one dollar, account number noted. Item seven, B, Public Safety and General Government. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute the certification and issuances by the chief executive of the applicant government as necessary to accept grant funding under Department of Justice, BJA Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, award number noted. And two, authorize Knoll Police Department to utilize a non-competitive procurement justification form with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of investigative equipment with a two-year supportive prescription. Funding is provided by the BJA Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, award number noted. And three, authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a Second Amendment to the memorandum of agreement by and between the Rock Recovery Network of Programs Inc. and the City of Knoll, commencing on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the amount of two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be paid from account number noted. And four, approve the recommended vape shop fees for vape shop ordinance. Application fee, two hundred and fifty dollars, renewal fee, two hundred and fifty dollars, duplicate license fee, thirty dollars. Item seven, C, Community Service. Item one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute necessary agreements and amendments with the Knoll Housing Authority for health department staff and partners to use the space at the Invision Center for community health training and program. Seven, D, Land Use and Building Management. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Hazros Inc., State Contract Number Noted, for the Fox Run Elementary School of Asbestos Flooring Removal and Replacement Project for a total not to exceed two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Funds are available as follows in account number noted. Item two, authorize MPS Fertility Department to issue change orders on this contract for a total of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Funds are available in account number noted. And three, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute, execute the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment with Newfield Construction Group LLC for relating schools HVAC improvement projects in the amount of ten million three hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Funds are available in account number noted. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a new management agreement with Growing Seeds Two, Child Development Center Inc., Growing Seeds, or extend the existing one as applicable for a term of two years, July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, to continue providing early childcare and education services out of the same space currently occupied by Growing Seeds under the existing management agreement at one sixty-five Flag Hill Road. And five, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a new management agreement with Connecticut Institute for Communities Inc., CIRC, or extend the existing one as applicable for a term of two years, July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, to continue providing early childcare and education services out of the same space currently occupied by CIRC under the existing management agreement at eleven Angles Ave and one sixty-five Hill Road. And six, authorize to increase the contingency allowance and the amount of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars to Newfield Construction Group LLC contract for the Knoll Community Recreation Center to cover the costs associated with water damage to the exterior building walls. Item seven, E. Public Works. One, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all necessary documents for the Connecticut Port Authority CPA through Small Harbor Improvement Projects Program SHIP related to the City of Knoll's awarded SHIP grant. And two, RD twenty twenty-five dash two, Rowways, Pavements, Sidewalks, and Waterman Installation. And authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement between the City of Knoll and Carrera Construction Company Inc. for project RD twenty twenty-five dash two, Rowway Paving, Sidewalks, and Waterman Installation for Flag Hill Road from Washington Street to Arbor Drive for a sum not to exceed two million six hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Base bid funded by the City of Knoll and one million nine hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Alternate A funded by Snoop. B, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a funded agreement between the City of Knoll and the second, second taxing district to fund the alternate one bid and the amount of one million nine hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars under the city's contract with Carrera Construction Company Inc. for project RD twenty twenty-five two, Rowway Paving Sidewalks and Waterman Installation for Flag Hill Road, account number noted. Three, authorize the chief of operations and public works to execute orders on the contract with Carrera Construction Company Inc. for project RD twenty twenty-five dash two, Rowway Paving Sidewalks and Waterman Installation for Flag Hill Road from Washington Street to Arbor Drive for a sum not to exceed four hundred and six, sixty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents, account number noted. And four, authorize the City of Knoll's purchasing agent to authorize a comparative purchase agreement purchase order to Gin Grass Ford LLC for the purchase of six Fortiscape plug-in high grays for a sum not to exceed two, two hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents, copy included, and account number noted. Five, authorize chief of operations and public works to execute orders on the contract between the City of Knoll and Laniel Concrete and Asphalt Paving LLC, project DRG twenty twenty-four dash one, Lockwood and Heatherland Drainage Improvement for a sum not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars, account number noted. Authorized, six, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an Eighth Amendment to the Woodard and Current Agreement dated August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, to provide professional engineering services for stormwater drainage design services of the proposed stormwater improvements downstream of the Broad River Park in accordance with professional services, task order dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, for a sum not to exceed three hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred dollars, account number noted. Item seven, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into a temporary right-of-entry agreement with Peter Capino at three Deerfield Streets for the construction access, slope modification, intrigue planning purposes, and connection with the sidewalk installation for project TNP twenty twenty-four dash eight, Soundview Avenue Sidewalk Connection Project. Item eight, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into a temporary right-of-entry agreement to go in certain portion of the following private properties for construction access slope modification process, purpose. Sorry. Related to the construction of new sidewalks and streetscapes as part of TNP twenty twenty-four dash seven, Hospital Hill Village Safety Enhancement Project, fifty-one Stevens Street, forty-seven Stevens Street, forty-three Stevens Street, sixty-seven Stewart Ave, sixty-nine Stewart Avenue. Nine, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a permanent sidewalk easement as well as enter into a temporary right-of-entry with Leonardo, Leonardo at nineteen Oxford Street for construction of a sidewalk along Nap Street and Oxford Street for project TNP twenty twenty-four dash nine, Sono School Sidewalk Connectivity Project. And ten, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a one, one-year contract extension on an existing contract with Rocco Bernardo General Contracting Company, TNP twenty twenty-three dash one, decorative crossrocks and traffic calming services at various locations for an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Item eleven, okay, it's number noted, sorry. Item eleven, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to award a contract agreement with Firewood Landscape and LLC in an amount of seven hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred and forty dollars with a ten percent contingency of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars for project TNP twenty twenty-five dash three, Adams Ave and Ward Street Curbing Sidewalk, Sidewalk Project, count number noted. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seed. Well done. You got yourself a long one there. You have heard the consent calendar. I will call for the vote. All in favor of the consent calendar is red. Please raise your hand. Opposed. Abstentions. And that carries unanimously. Unless anyone has any objections, I would like to move the executive session under land use and building management to the end. Okay, and then I would turn it over now to Mr. Frayer.
Okay, we have one item from the Public Works Department. authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute permanent sidewalk easement, permanent easement to construct and maintain a new seat wall and enter into a temporary right-of-entry agreement to go in a certain portion of the ten Wall Street or, uh, Wall Street or construction of a sidewalk and a seat wall related to the streetscape improvements as part of project L one oh two, zero, 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 four, East Wall Street, Landmark Squares, Safety, Accessibility, and Street, and Streetscape Improvement Project. Have a motion. I would like to move that forward, and I'd like to say something about it. This ease, this is an easement that will allow the, the installation of new seat walls at the bottom of Knight Street and High Street where they come to, uh, Wall Street. There's a nice patio going to be there. Uh, this is also part of the Phase One of the two, twenty-nine million dollar Wall Street corridor movement project. Uh, the completion of this particular phase is due to be completed by the end of this year. And I think we have Mr. Travis on the line if he wants to add anything to this.
Uh, thank you. Um, so yeah, I think you, you summed it up, uh, up, up well. This phase of the project will bring an extended pedestrian plaza at the end. And in that, we found that the adjacent property owner, uh, had you, that we, in order for us to construct a legal sidewalk, we needed to have this easement. And this wall is actually serviced as, uh, you know, a separation between the new public space and the private space that, that, that exists there. Uh, but, but, uh, we think that it will also be a great value add to, to, you know, aesthetic values, uh, that come to the end. And really, the plaza we see as a home, uh, we're, we're working with the, the local community right now, but really see this as a home to pay homage to Horace Silver, who, if many of you may know, is a Norwalk native. Uh, he is, he was a very famous jazz pianist and composer. Um, and he lived on Brook Street, which is, which is right away. So having, you know, paid homage to, you know, a Norwalk native, you know, in, in, at this location, I think will be great. And I think the, the, the wall we heard from the community, from the community, uh, they wanted very much opportunity for, uh, for, for people to, to sit. Uh, so we think that we're get, you're, we're doing, uh, we're getting two for one. So we're getting the separation, but we're also getting, um, you know, that, it will be actually as a seat wall, so it'll be just knee-high. So I'm happy to answer any questions, um, if anybody has any.
Any questions, Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, Chair. Another question, but a comment. Um, I wanted to highlight this easement because of all the work that is happening in Wall Street area, um, which is my area, District A. Not only the signage and, and crosswalks, but there's a lot of things going on in Wall Street. Wall Street is finally getting revitalized, and we have talked about it. So some of us are blue in the face, but it is now physically happening. And so this is an excitement. It might be small in the grand scheme of, scheme of everything that public safety does, but it really is just another check mark that we are moving in the right way to reevaluate a system, um, not a system, a neighborhood that kind of had not gotten all of this due justice for a very long time. Now, my colleagues here from District B would say that Sono is the, is the town center. I would argue historically, back in, that Wall Street area is the true downtown of Norwalk. And these small little things. And these small little things, the sidewalk, the trees, the easements are getting us back to being the town center that many of us grew up and knew about. So I'm so happy. Yay, Wall Street.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Any other comments? Uh, Mr. Mr. Sead?
I just want to thank, um, TNP, Jim and Garrett and everybody, um, there and also the council and, and, uh, the mayor for really and everybody. This is a team effort, state, local and, and federal, uh, to make this happen. Um, business owners and the people of Wall Street have been promised that this is going to be revitalized and going back to, I think, the sixties. Um, and this is something that's, that's finally happening. Um, and the people, um, of Wall Street, the business owners and the residents, they know TNP. Um, they, they know TNP more than they know the representatives sometimes, um, because they spent time, um, Jim, um, and Garrett, their first week or two here, they, they spent time walking that street and, and had this idea and the people know. Um, Jim and I did a walk, um, on Earth Day for the second year and people were stopping by and beeping the horn because they know who he is. And that just shows, um, how important this project is, but it's also done the right way where the people were involved um, who are being affected by the stakeholders, the businesses and people are, um, completely connected with TNP and have input of what's going on. Um, so I just want to really thank you, um, Jim and Garrett, the entire team at TNP for really listening to the people of that area. Um, because that's why this project is so important. It's really heartwarming to see because it's, it's government done right. Um, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Sead. Are there any other comments or questions?
Chair, if I may, just respond. So, thank you, uh, for both of you, but, but, you know, I think you, you, you honed in when you said, you know, this project is really successful because it is, it is a village, you know, it's, it's, many people come together to, to make this happen. Um, and we certainly have listened to the community. We certainly do participate to the, to the community. Uh, but I also have to give credit where credit was due and both of you come to the table every single time we, 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 we talk to you, right? And, um, you there, you're there showing up. You did the walk with us. We, we, we did together. Uh, Nikki, you and I have been, uh, this for, 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 for some time now. We, we saw it. Um, I think it is successful because we have all come together with a unified voice, working together and really proving what we do when, what, what can happen when we actually do all work together. So thank you for, for everything.
Thank you, Jim. Um, and I would just like to add a few notes and Jim, I know that I have sung yours and Garrett's praises many, many, many times in committee, but I don't, you know, just, I, I'm not going to repeat everything that has already been said because there's no need. It's already been said. But I do want to point out, and maybe you can give us, uh, the figure, the millions and millions of dollars in grants that you have worked for and received to make this project happen. Do you have the number off the top of your head?
So, so we have, you know, so, so we're up to, you know, uh, you, you, we really believe that the number based on what we're seeing for, for construction costs and, and, you know, factors of inflation that come through, that we're really going to see a number, you know, probably at this range being about twenty-nine million dollars, of which we have twenty-one million dollars secured. Um, and I, you, I, I don't want to tell our own horns, but this is something that's not typically happened. You, you usually get this after you have the plans and our funders can actually see something. But this is really the passion that comes from the community, the stories that we're able to, to share. Um, that, that's gotten us there. And, you know, I have full faith that we will get there, uh, for, for the remaining half. And, uh, you know, we've already have, have some preliminary commitments from, from individuals who will be advocating for, you know, additional grants to, to make this happen, but, uh, we will see this through. I think we will deliver a project that people will be able to see, feel and be proud of, um, and, you know, at, at all levels. So, um, you know, nearly there, um, and, and, uh, you know, so this year I think we're going to see phase one because we committed to the community that will, we're, we're going to start it. Um, and then we're also, uh, we, we are out, uh, shortly, we'll be out to bid. The, uh, the notices are, are with purchasing right now, uh, for the first phase of the Yankee Dual Garage. So simultaneously we'll have benefits, uh, you know, to, to the Yankee Dual Garage facade, uh, and lighting to, to make it more comfortable and use. So that is funded by, uh, the Norwok Parking Authority. Um, so I think this is, you know, again, uh, you know, it's a great combination of, you know, what we can get with city funds, uh, to do the design and state and federal partners to make it happen. Uh, and, uh, you know, and, and also, you know, uh, other partners such as the, the Parking Authority as well.
Thank you very much, Jim. It certainly is an exciting time for Wall Street and all of Norwok. Um, any final comments?
Okay, I will.
Chair, uh, uh, Ms. Ayers, I, I just want to say to, to Ms. Ayers, those were fighting words. Come on now. The fight is on, but, but in all, yeah, but in all honesty, it, it's about time and, and, and District B and South Norwok and over where you all are on Wall Street are, have been the cornerstone and hub of the community for decades before, you know, it, it transitioned to, into what it was. Um, and it is a great thing to see that these areas are being revitalized back to those times and, and truth be told, those are the areas that are going to be attractions to the city and what makes others want to come and visit. So keep going, Jim Travers, and, and do what needs to be done because Norwok is a great place and it's about time that, um, that Wall Street area comes back alive again, and it's so exciting to see. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will steal it one more time if we want, if we're on the revitalization, uh, bandwagon. Um, I believe Michelle may have notified, uh, you, but if not, uh, you'll be notified shortly. Uh, on the nineteenth is the groundbreaking for Hospital Hill, uh, and that is a community connectivity grant, uh, that we received that will bring massive revitalization to there, uh, and we're tying that groundbreaking in with the fifteenth anniversary of the Blue Cactus. That has been, you know, the, the owners are Norwok natives, uh, they live here in the city and that, that's been in that location for fifteen years. They're all really excited about that. So please join us and grab a shovel on the nineteenth, uh, and, and celebrate, uh, the, the Blue Cactus and, and a number of programs in the city, but, uh, you'll have word. So it's nine thirty on the nineteenth.
Thank you for that reminder. Anything else? Okay, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? And that carries unanimously. Next, we need to, uh, moving on to suspension of the rules. We need to suspend the rules to add a public works item. So, uh, this was an item that what needed to be tabled from the regular public works meeting and came to a special meeting last night. And so I need a motion to suspend the rules. Uh, uh, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, to Mr. Freyer to read the language.
We made the motion, correct? I did, okay. Thank you. This, uh, in the special meeting, uh, last night, um, we, uh, the Public Works Committee, uh, got together and, and discussed and approved this, uh, this item that I will read now. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a ninth amendment to the August twenty-two thousand and seven agreement for professional engineering services between the city of Norwok and Aid to Caesar Associates, PC, regarding the East Avenue Reconstruction Project for an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars in accordance with the attached scope of services dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Account so noted. Um, I'd like to move this item and say a few things about it first. Um, first of all, is, there's some history here and the history is that, um, in two thousand and seven, the Caesar Associates was hired uh, to perform the engineering services in connection with the East Avenue Reconstruction Project, uh, which was approved and then included in the, in the TOD. This, this is before the initiation of the Walk Bridge. Subsequently, as the Walk Bridge replacement was put into place, the, this particular project has been kind of sistered up with it and it's, um, and, and it's, it's gained a lot of momentum. So the project now includes expanding the width of, of the East Avenue under the railroad bridge particularly and which means that we're taking the railroad bridge down and we're expanding the pedestals on it. So you'll have a wider expanse. Um, quite a bit more than what we have today. Uh, the roadways impacted are East Avenue Cemetery Street and Gregory Boulevard. Uh, again, these are all state roads. So as a result of that, the city of Norwok is not response, is only responsible for the design of these, these, uh, roads. Um, and, and because of that, the, the, the cost, the Connecticut DOT is then responsible for all the construction costs, including roads, sidewalks, uh, paving, drainage for the whole project. So come to today, um, after nearly twenty years that the, uh, Connecticut DOT is, is now ready to begin the project. And, uh, the DP, DPW has been meeting with the, um, with them for about the past few months, three, four months now, reviewing the details of the design and design, general design that we put together. And now times change. We've gone almost twenty years. So cer- certain things have changed with this. Um, so there has to be some more details. We have to finish the design and finalize the design to give to the, uh, DOT. Um, and that is in, incorporated in those details are going to be, uh, placement of, or placement of certain drainage, uh, things, manhole locations, minor alterna, alterations to the, uh, Greenwich, uh, Gregory Boulevard, um, uh, the island in Greg, Gregory Boulevard, um, there's always be some enhancements to the cities to, to comply with the city's complete streets, the directions we have today. Um, these will include bike lanes, sidewalks, crosswalks. Um, and the Connecticut, uh, DOT have agreed with all the city's updates to this, to this design. Um, now it falls to DeCesar to make the, to finalize those plans, to put them in, uh, as built drawings or and so that the DOT can finally begin their work. Um, they have their shawls in their hand, you know, just waiting now for our, our approval of this. Um, the, uh, it should be noted that there, uh, that the, all the modifications that have been made to the existing design, um, do not take into, or, or are not in any way, uh, on the account of the approved housing project that is on Seventh Avenue Street. That is, that is, we should not be con- construing that as, as pushing some of these design changes. Okay? Um, so the two projects are not in any way reliant on one another. So, um, we are ready, uh, and one of the reasons why we brought this to a special, uh, uh, committee meeting was that there is an urgency to get to Caesar to, to give, to work on these, on these, um, on these items. Uh, and once that's done, once we turn the, and the, the OT has already agreed to it. And so once we turn it over, then we are ready to go install work on this project. And I think, uh, Jim Travis is here, uh, if this, if anybody else has any other questions. Jim was very instrumental in, in taking the design and just adding our complete streets, uh, uh, some, some complete street aspect to them too. And we went over this at our committee meeting just the other day. So, does anybody have any other questions? Or Jim, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, I think, I think you summed it up. I think that, you know, the reality is, is this is a very small investment that the city has uh, to making a very large and substantial i- investment into the neighborhood. There'll be all new sidewalks. Uh, the, you know, the street cape that was designed, uh, as part of the East Darlock TOD, uh, all being implemented. Uh, there'll be all street trees, uh, pedestrian level lighting. So, you know, and, and, um, I think one of the highlights that, that I see is we're really able to, to capture a sidewalk around the entirety of the cemetery there that, you know, today there's not even, you know, it's, it, there's no sidewalk, uh, but there's not even a, a crosswalk to, to safely get you there. So the, 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 the project will add, uh, not only a sidewalk around the entirety of the cemetery, but multiple points of, of, of safe passage through crosswalks, you know, a- around there. So I think we'll see, you know, a, a significant investment in the, in the neighborhood, uh, in, in relatively short order. And we don't have to pay for it, which is even better, right?
Thank God.
Any questions? Might be a little hard to wrap your brain around unless you've seen the plans as, as we did in the, uh, Public Works Committee, but, um, yeah, there is an urgency to get it done. So, uh, comments, questions before we vote? If seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? And that carries unanimously. Now, moving on to our executive session, settlement of claim CGS one dash two, sorry. Like a general statutes, one dash two hundred six B and E and one dash twenty-one B ten. Executive session. Do I have a motion to move, go to executive session? Okay, Mr. Goldstein, and we are in executive session at eight sixteen.
Um, for those here, we're going downstairs.
Yeah, we have to go to room two, three, one, two thirty-one.
And then.
And then we come back here. Okay, yeah.
Uh, uh, Chair, um, President, I have the link. I have the, um, link. So do I just get on that way?
Yeah, so you, yeah, leave this and go to, join the link.
Yeah, and then just give us a couple of minutes. Yeah, just.
Yeah, we're headed.
Log on to the, anybody on video as part of the, so good log on right now. Um, the council has invited council.
Darren's already in, yeah.
David, yeah, we've invited for the record, we've invited, uh, legal council has been invited in, uh, to answer questions.
Okay. We are back from executive session. At nine fifteen during executive session, no motions were made, no, uh, votes were taken. I would like now to make a motion to suspend the rules, to amend the language in the agenda under item seven D seven settlement of claim CGS one two hundred six B and E, one dash twenty-one B ten. Um, and may I take a vote, please, to suspend the rules, to add language? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. That is opposed. Okay, that is unanimous. And now I will read the language. And I would like to move the language, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into a tri-party agreement between the city of Norwok City, Odyssey Learning Center, Inc., Odyssey, and Jewish Community Center, Inc., JCC. One, granting JCC a license to use room one oh seven in the Nathaniel Ely School Building to operate its jumpstart program. And two, settling disputed user fee arrears claims with Odyssey under twenty sixteen management agreement as amended. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a new management agreement with Odyssey Learning Center, Inc., Odyssey, or extend the existing one as applicable for a term of two years, July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-seven, to continue providing child daycare services out of the same space currently occupied by Odyssey under the existing management agreement, subject to council's authorization of the tri-party agreement between Odyssey Jewish Community Center, Inc. and the city. And I will call for the vote. Please, all in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Freyer? Thank you very, uh, all in favor. Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.